Thank you very much for being at tonight's meeting. If you have a cellphone or other electronic device, if you'd please silence it at this time. It's very good to see everyone here. And the first item on our agenda tonight relates to citizen concerns. If there are any concerned citizens who would like to approach the board, please do so at this time stating your name and address and the nature of your concern. Hearing none, we will move to item three, approval of the agenda dated December 6th, 2016.
Move it.
Well, second is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the agenda is approved five to zero. Item four is approval of the minutes of the November 29th, 2016 meeting.
Move it.
Second.
Motion and a second is there discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item five is discussion and approval of the claims.
Move it.
Second.
Motion and a second is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the claims are approved on a vote of five to zero. Item six, human resources, our director Ed Gilliland. Item A is the approval of the memorandum of personnel transaction. Ed?
Move it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion on the memorandum? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item B is the approval of a request to deauthorize accounting position.
Move it.
Well, second is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. And item C should be is to authorize the chairman to sign an authorization to initiate the hiring process.
Move it.
Well, second that, is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Ed, thank you very much. Item seven, planning and zoning, our director John Pellelo. Item A is to receive a recommendation from the zoning commission and approval of resolution accepting and approving final plating for the Cole addition, a minor subdivision, GIS parcel named in your agenda. John?
If you remember from our previous meetings, the Cole family wishes to take approximately a 38 acre parcel and divide it into two lots. Their intent is to take the existing single-family dwelling and move it on the parcel to lot one, I believe, of the plating you've been presented. They'll sell that particular lot to a family member. The balance of the lot will remain in agricultural production. The only condition the zoning commission placed upon final plat approval was the recording of a paving agreement that meets county paving policy. That document's been prepared, executed, and we have a copy in our file. It'll be recorded right after the final plat is recorded. Staff concurs with the recommendation of the zoning commission that the plat be approved.
Very good. Are there questions or discussion as related to this item?
Move it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receive the recommendation and for a motion to approve the resolution accepting and approval of final plating. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Item B is to receive a recommendation from the zoning commission and approval of resolution accepting and approval of final plating, the Anka addition, a minor subdivision, GIS parcel named in your agenda. John?
Craig Hillinger operated a company called Healy Works along the north side of Highway 20. That particular parcel is approximately four acres, has a number of structures on it. Historically, the property's been used for his Healy Works business, which he's expanding into another phase of emergency vehicle restoration and repair. He's going to sell off, he's going to divide this particular parcel into two lots. The west lot contains a number of structures that are related to a storage facility that he used for his business, as well as a lot of personal and commercial storage structures. He's going to sell those structures off retaining his most recent construction. That's where his floor, his showroom and his work areas related to the structure on the far east side of that particular parcel. So what we've got is a two lot subdivision part of it will be sold, existing drive will be used. The only conditions the zoning commission placed upon their recommendation was that we resolve the parking, loading, signage, and uses related to whoever buys the lot one. This particular instance, we have a buyer and a close set for sale. That'll probably happen in the next several days or within the week. We can't determine parking because you have to determine use before you can determine parking. In this particular case, there's sufficient areas out there to resolve all those issues. We'll just do that at the zoning office level.
So the parameters of what will be required for any future usage will be determined at that time, or?
Yes.
Okay.
We're hoping we can get this done without a rezone. Presently, the parcel is zone general commercial. Possibly, the buyer may need a light industrial zoning, but we can make that happen at that time, if it's necessary at all. We need to get a better feel for how this particular property owner will use the property and its structures.
Other questions or discussion? I'd move approval of the resolution accepting and approval of final plating with conditions.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, and the motion carries five to zero. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
You guys came all the way to this meeting just for that.
We'd walk a mile for you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item eight, building services, director Kenny Schmitz, county sheriff's office, major Todd Wick. This is the LEC jail kitchen planning, which has formulated a logical event process identified to expand the footprint required for kitchen and sheriff operations. Kenny?
The item in front of you is information item only. And I've got a couple handouts, or a handout I'll have you look at, it's a print. Due to the closure of the Prairie Hills facility and the kitchen functions being moved to the LEC, we need to do some alterations or some movements within the jail to accommodate the kitchen supply areas that are necessary. One of the things we're looking at on your print, you'll see a cooler and a freezer and a dry goods storage area. That would be up in your left-hand corner. And so that is currently where our existing conference room is located. And the reason we've drawn those cooler freezer and dry storage areas in that location is due to access and availability to get those goods into the facility and up into the kitchen in a safe manner. It provides a path to come into the building and use back hallways to get up into the kitchen through the elevator. Now, it would also require the relocation of the current existing conference room that we have at the LEC. We would recommend that that be relocated into an area in what you would consider the old clerks area, which would be in the bottom right-hand corner of your print.
That's where we have confirm?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And one thing to note, or two things to note, is this would be a standalone project. In other words, any funds utilized for this project would be standalone and separate from the LEC expansion project. In other words, this project could be conducted whether or not an LEC expansion project moved forward or not. And the other thing to note is we would have to reallocate some CIP funds in the current 2017 year CIP, but we do have an available place to do that. Todd, if you'd like to say a few words, we did attach a letter from the sheriff's department, and Todd, if you'd like to address that?
Yeah, I'm just here to confirm that obviously the sheriff's office is in complete agreement. A lot of careful planning's been done here, a lot of thought, and the sheriff and the sheriff's office is in agreement with what we want to do here for this optimization plan.
Are there any questions that we can ask? Very good. Questions or discussions as related to this project?
I had a lot of concerns about using the old clerks area for the storage of kitchen. The entrance was off the main street, it couldn't, you have to back a truck up to that door, which was no loading area, and then to get it upstairs was even more complicated. So to me, this makes an awful lot of sense. They can back up to the loading dock, move it into this area, go down that back corridor to the elevator, and they're there. I mean, it just, it's good use, I think.
The Goldberg group was consulted on this. I think probably Shane could probably reiterate, but this is one of the things that they had pointed out, exactly as Mark stated, it would make more sense and security-wise to reutilize our space locations.
Supervisor Clausen?
What is the estimated cost then, this Kenny?
Shane?
So, we have two components to the estimated cost. We have the estimated component to redo the sheriff's area. We have that budget right now just on a square footage number at $150,000 to redo the sheriff's area. We've also have some miscellaneous pieces that are going to happen to the kitchen area, and we have that budget right now at $75,000.
I'm a little concerned.
Shane, if you'll express where we can put those numbers at?
So those numbers, again, are just set on a square footage basis, utilizing minimal replacement and minimal walls have to be done in there. So we just looked at it right now until we had a set plan or even an approval of you guys. This is just a schematic design to show you what the space could look like. We still have to work through the details of what the conference room will have in it before I can tie down an exact budget cost of what everything is going to be, is we've got to know what all the parts and pieces are going to be. So we take a space and we look at, I'm doing 10,000 square feet, okay? And I just put a budgetary number for carpets, minimal ceiling things, it's 15 bucks a square foot. When we talk about the kitchen and how I got there, it's we've got to get power to these new coolers and freezers, some different components of that, some cleaning and extending the hoods upstairs. So again, I do it on a square footage basis, and it's a smaller square footage, so that's how we came up with that number as well.
Well, and to follow up, this money is going to be taken out of the current CIP?
That is correct.
So we're going to have to rebond?
No. We haven't borrowed the money. We don't borrow the money on the current CIP till April, May, because we have more definite amount of what kind of money we need to borrow.
But we're taking it out of, is that money already been borrowed, Denny?
No. No, the money for 2017 CIP has not been borrowed whatsoever. That will be borrowed in April and May of 17.
But it's been budgeted for?
It's been budgeted, yes. And we actually start paying taxes on it, on that loan during the 17, 18 budget.
So what you've done, just to follow up on Supervisor Clausen's questions, if you've taken C1 number 17 from Trosper Hoyt and the amount of $250,000 that was originally allocated for tuck pointing on that building?
That's correct.
And you've said as a greater need or priority right now is the estimated $225,000 that would take to get to this project.
Yes.
So the board previously approved the $250,000 as a budget, but you're asking this board's permission, not tonight, but next week, I would assume, to reallocate those monies accordingly.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But then, this is going to have to go back into the following year's bonding, or we're just not going to do the tuck pointing and everything else, because that's what this was dedicated for originally.
That is correct. That is correct, Larry. This was, I'm working with Denny and everybody, this is part of the scoring system. We dealt with priorities. We had a study done of Trosper Hoyt's tuck pointing, and it's something that isn't going to be needed to come back onto the CIP budget for about five to six years. So because of that, we took a higher priority here as this sheriff's area was a higher priority than the tuck pointing that we could hold off for, I think that, and the kitchen, both of those. Yes, sir.
And the CIP 18 proposed, wasn't the sheriff's office next year, not this year? Are we bumping this up? I thought I saw $150,000 in next year's allocation for administration.
That would be in the south office.
17, 18. You mean, we're going to spend $150,000 on one side, another $150,000 on the other side?
If that's approved and after they talk about the long-range piece in scoring.
I thought the 150 covered everything, not just half of the first floor, and then we got another 150 for the other half of the first floor, so we're literally, we're spending $300,000 on sheriff's office remodeling.
If we were to move forward?
If we do all of it.
Yes.
And kitchen, right?
Kitchen is added on, too. That's another 75. So you're talking 150, 150 plus 75 in the two fiscal years.
Right. But because it is, you know, if you're looking at all told.
Right.
And this does not discount the 150 in next year's CIP?
No, that'll still be there.
It's a difference.
There's two projects. I didn't understand that. Because this is a new project this year, it wasn't anticipated when you did budgeting, but we're using other funds or other allocations.
Because tuck pointing was anticipated, but it's not a need.
That's why the CIP.
Right. Not a high need.
To prove it, it changes every week. Almost literally every week it changes.
Yeah.
It's hard.
It's changed about every week.
Yeah, pretty much.
A lot of money diverted in those projects.
And what is this going to do to the total amount of money being spent for remodeling?
It'll still be 5,700 some odd thousand for the current year.
I'm talking about the 1.2, I believe it is.
This is not included. The 75,000 is a separate project, like Kenny stated, it's a separate project. The remodeling of the kitchen is, or the administrative office on the other side are separate projects, because you could do them even though you didn't even do the expansion.
Right, but the other 150 is for remodeling for the sheriff's department?
But that's not part of the jail expansion. Those are all separate projects.
Even the 150 that's in 18 is a separate project, because you don't have to do it. It's part of a facility optimization plan that we paid, you guys paid Goldberg to do, and it's part of what they're coming. So the task was, you tell us what priorities to pick off first and second, and when we come, when everybody comes before you with the 2018 CIP request, that's when the board will say yes or no to where we score these things at.
Is there any potential that the board could say, we're not going to do the administrative office for moving the east side of that room?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. Because we're going to rate every one. We have, I think, 33 projects total in the county. We're going to rate every one of them. This year, we will be using a rating schedule, because last year, the need was there that we decided to do all the projects for 17. So there will be a rating, because the 18, 17, 18 request is large.
So I just want to, I guess I wanted to make the point, because that's part of, you know, when we're talking about the $150,000 for the remodel of the sheriff's administration, that may be something the board says, we're not going to do. But the issue before this board tonight is simply and solely on the kitchen, which whether this comes in under bid or not, makes a whole lot of sense to do, because that's one of the only things that's keeping Prairie Hills as a needed item in the facility.
I'm not against this.
Oh, and I'm not saying you are.
Financially, I don't know where this is going to end up.
It's not changing our total CIP for the fiscal year 17, it's just reallocating certain portions of the 17.
Right, but you've still got the original hanging out there, which was the tuck pointing.
That project will not be done this year.
No, I understand that, but you're still, that has to be done eventually.
Yes.
So the money that was planned to do that is being expended somewhere else, and then you've got the other 100 and a half that...
That's part of that 250.
Right, but that isn't programmed anywhere yet. Well, I like the concept of the CIP being fluid. We didn't ever dream we would have the courtroom issue. We never dreamt the terracotta was going to come down, and unless you have a fluid CIP, you can't deal with that. So moving, tuck pointing up one, two, three, four years, to make these things happen, I think makes a lot of sense.
It's getting back to what he says, prioritizing your needs that are current needs.
And I think the challenge for the board going forward is going to be looking at that, and what makes sense in the next year, three, five, and 10 years, what can be pushed off so that we're not consistently making the fluidity decisions, but we're, we've planned out, you know, what can be pushed off and what needs to be done this year. Any other questions specifically on the LEC jail kitchen planning and those two specific So I assume then this will come back as an action item next week, would you plan? And then if that is the case, and this board does take affirmative action on it, what would you anticipate as a timeline on cooler, freezer, dry storage, and this conference area? What are we looking at, start to finish?
So this is a step process. I've got to, we have to get the conference room done first, first step one.
Why?
Because I'm going to be putting the cooler, freezer, dry storage into what is a conference room that's utilized by many different departments for many different reasons. So the first thing we have to do is get a new space for the department head meetings, for the jurors, for everybody, so I've got to get the conference room done first. When that conference room is then complete, we can then do the dry storage and the cooler, freezer locations. So our goal is to get the conference room done. We get approval, we'd like to have the conference room done by the end of January.
When would you anticipate that CBM is functional and they're wholly in here?
I'm sorry.
Just rough guess, and they're completely doing everything out of here, and they never even drive.
March 1st.
I would say March 1st of the 15.
Of this, March 1st.
March 1st of 15.
Yeah, March of the 15, yeah, 1st of 15. By mid-March, that'd be our goal. And step three would be, so step one was build the conference room, step two is build that kitchen, step three is to get the sheriff's office piece done in there so that it's taken care of.
Very good.
I have a, just a dollars and cents question. On the $250,000 we have formally allocated for Trosper Hoyt tuck pointing, we'll have $25,000 left if this comes in at estimate. What happens to that CIP item going forward, since we've agreed not to do it? Does it drop off, or does it stay to be reallocated if needed in the future? What's the practice there?
I would say we leave the $25,000 there for possible reallocation of projects that may pop up the rest of fiscal year. If we don't use it, and we know that toward the end, we'll reduce what we borrow. We won't borrow the money.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your information tonight. Item nine, under Board of Supervisors, just a quick update. I put some material in backup on the 24/7 program lobbying update. I think collectively, as a board, we took Gilman's efforts last legislative session to get in front of legislators and wrote a unified letter. I've learned that 24/7 is part of the governor's initiative, and he's making impaired driving a cornerstone of the 2017 legislative session. Advocates have met with the governor's office to discuss the program. They are supportive. There was an article in the Des Moines Register recently. And I would say this, whether it was in Republican hands or Democratic hands, I think that having both, the House and the Senate, in either party's hands, sometimes can break some of the bottlenecking for whatever reason, and at least it's a new opportunity. And so my hope is that it's really a nonpartisan issue, that all legislators would look at 24/7, because as we are looking to expand our law enforcement center, at some point, we've alluded to this, you can build and build and build, but until you get programmatic smart reforms to alleviate some of that jail population, then we're sort of back to square one. So it's just an update, but there seems to be some hopeful signs.
Is there any money that goes with this? Doesn't have to be.
Not that I, not that I know of, but because it's generally a self-sustaining program, given that each of the, not inmates, but participants has to pay twice a day, that should cover the cost. I know some of the rub last year was the interlock ignition. Folks think that that's the way to go. Others say an unsupervised interlock isn't the way. I don't really care what another county does, I just want us to have the freedom to do either or, or have counties have some home rule in it, so we'll see.
Yes, sir.
Item 10, Chairman's Report, Ag Expo Architectural Meeting had today, December 16th is the date that the city goes in front of IEDA for final approval. The $20 million is getting closer to 16, 17 million dollar range. They have looked at approximately 900 parking stalls on site, as well as MarVee parking. They are maintaining 3,000 seats on their seats, not benches. The under area, because you have to walk up for the seating, will have ticketing concession, the museum, Western Iowa Tech, and other vendor areas below. I had a chance to meet with Joe Kelly and hear his expertise, as he's been in Reno and Sparks and Rapid City and Lincoln, and has really done a lot of work. And so I have asked that they come before this board and give some renderings, as well as a timeline, and update us more fully as a complete board, but hopefully on the 16th, they receive a final approval from the state and move forward. So just wanted to let everyone know that. If there's any thoughts. Item B, Prairie Hills Training Facility Funding Potential. I met with a couple of folks from the sheriff's office. They've talked about the training needs that go on at Prairie Hills, that we understand, I originally talked about their need to have some sort of training facility there. They talked about the union potentially contributing a sizable amount of money, $40,000 or upwards, and donating some excavation work. I've asked for county attorney's office to work on helping us to set up a fund to be a recipient of any donations, so that we can look as a public-private partnership in this, similar to the Courthouse Foundation that was set up at one point, to see if we can receive some private donations, look at grants, and look at other funding potentials before looking at any other needs as far as taxpayer dollars or otherwise. So just wanted to let you know that those conversations are being had. Item C, which isn't on your agenda, but I'll just bring up, we did talk about a purchasing concern. If you remember last, several weeks ago, we talked about some central purchasing initiative that had gone on, and wanted to make sure that we were being charged the same price as everyone else. Had a meeting today, and we'll be in discussion on what Woodbury County is owed, if anything, over and above what had been charged, and we'll also be disseminating some information to department heads and elected officials, and very much appreciate the auditor's office and Michelle's help in discerning what that was, so. And then finally, we are to report on committee meetings.
I attended ISAC's Fall School of Instruction. I just had a few highlights I thought I'd mention. There's a session on COOP-COG, or Continuity of Operations and Government. That was interesting, and recommended to continue to government plans run four positions deep. I mentioned that state laws can only tell you what positions must be filled by when, but they don't necessarily help they don't necessarily help you decide on continuity of operations, that is, what positions, say, a clerk would be temporarily appointed to fulfill the critical tasks of government while that position's being filled. There is a kind of informative Iowa State Extension Research Session on Poverty Trends Since 2000. Unfortunately, Woodbury County was the example of the worst impact since that date, losing 12.3% income among metros, while Johnson County, Iowa City gained 6.6%. Going forward, the trends point to rural and micropolitain, smaller metros having a competitive advantage, and that should be the focus of state and locally economic development, which I think with our comprehensive plans is a good thing that we're investing in that area of our county. There was also discussion of the legislative priorities for next year that the ISAC group collectively is endorsing. Almost number one for the last few years has been mental health, sustainable funding. The problem being there's lack of equalization funding, the problem of forced unfunded mandates being put upon regions, and a recommendation for the legislature is to provide sufficient funding for effective implementation of a children's mental health disability services program, which our CEO has advocated and might be looking into absorbing in the region's budget the following year. As the regional director has noted, also a support for that. Water quality management slash flood mitigation, significant state funding needed for a possible revolving loan program for multiple projects throughout the years ahead, including upgrades of water treatment facilities, the implementation of a network of statewide, quote, watershed authorities through 2080 agreements to coordinate such efforts, and counties being in coordination with local conservation boards to implement that. On tax increment financing, they mentioned today, TIF districts can be established without any input from the elected officials within a county. Possible solution being financial impact statements being prepared by the entity requesting the TIF prior to approval. I almost imagine, like, the financial impact statement in our board agenda package, just on a much larger scale. And of course, a sunsetting period for all TIF districts, even grandfathered ones, something that's probably been discussed before, but comes as a recurring theme. Also, more restrictions on TIF, public TIF projects that would not normally generate property tax revenue, so you wouldn't get around that as easily. Bonding for county courthouse improvements. We supported legislation to base the bond amount for public bidding on the amount of the bonds issued rather than the total cost of the project, the intent being here to provide adequate space for the courts, but it could certainly apply, as in our case, to critical repair work, which not all counties deal with. And then, just a year after the 10-cent fuel tax increase, the Iowa State Associate of Counties is asking the legislature to include areas beyond simply a tax on fuel, which is a declining source of revenue. I've always personally seen it, raising taxes was just a Band-Aid approach anyway to a long-term problem. So we'll see what initiatives are taken up by the legislature next year, but that's the impetus from the greatest, you know, the largest group of county officials that we have to lobby for us.
All right, anyone else? I have one other thing, just to let you know that I had had a request to approve a lighting of the menorah, and my understanding is there is some precedence for this.
Yes.
And so I said that that would be fine and supported, so if there are details forthcoming, I'll let everyone know. But just to know that I said, based on that precedence, and that I think that the group has that right, then that may be something on the schedule. Any other reports on committee meetings? Any citizen concerns, which is our item under number 12? Finally, under number 13, any board concerns and comments? Hearing none, then I would move that we adjourn.
Not bad.
Five minutes. Oh, I was five minutes over. Each night, we like to be at 10:00, depending on how long.